We should probably, we should probably take care of the motion first.
The motion.
Yes, we should. I'm sorry. All those in favor of the motion to approve the motion to approve of the minutes with the exception of the airport commission minutes of November 16th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And motion carries. I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to pull the minutes and then talk a little bit about item number three, which is the CH3 commercial hangar, possible sale, commercial use. Staff updated the commission on a possible sale of a private hangar, CH3, which is currently owned by Bruce Jaeger to Dunick Companies. The hangar is just west of the FBO on the ramp. The city has a couple of concerns with the possible transaction. Buildings on the ramp were intended to be commercial operations, and Mr. Dunick proposes storing four planes in the hangar. It is questionable whether Paul Beck of Weep No More will be able to remain in and operate out of the end of the bay of the building. The city assessor currently taxes it as a commercial building, and it would remain so based on the location, type of construction, and the corporate use of the building. The second concern is if Weep No More cannot afford the new rent prices in the CH3 hangar. Paul Beck is wondering if he could purchase one of the private hangars and operate his commercial fuel tank line repair business out of that hangar group. The city would prefer and encourage the business to remain where it currently is. Commercial uses are best suited for ramp location. And, Mr. Mayor, we have with us tonight Steve Nedrowlo and Pat Curry, who is the chairman of the Airport Commission, and Eric Rendigan and Paul Beck. And so I guess I'd ask if we could have both Steve and Pat say a few things.
Would you care to address the council?
Mr. Mayor and council members?
Your name and address, please.
My name is Pat Curry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Steve Nedrowlo.
Thank you.
Thank you. I forgot who I was. It's been a long time since I've stood up here. I just want to talk a little bit about the Airport Commission. I want to thank the council members, especially Jim Dacken, who is our liaison from the council to the Airport Commission. We have a great group of people that are working with the Airport Commission, and you just heard what Jim read, what we're trying to do out there. And I've been in, Mr. Mayor, and taught you a number of times, what can we do to bring more business out there. And we think that if, you've already mentioned Paul Beck, if Paul should buy a building or a hangar down to the west side, down to the south side, we're going to be able to allow something like that, and that's what we're up here for. And we have a great airport. We need to get some business out there. We need to do everything we possibly can to locate aviation-type business out there. And if this is going to help, we should really think about it. So I'm going to let Steve talk about the lease out there. He owns an airport, owns a hangar out there, so go for it, Steve.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, historically, we've not had a zone of commercial versus non-commercial, except the designation that commercial businesses would be on the ramp, so to speak. This area down below on the south, approximately one-fourth of those hangars are for sale. And so, in addition to Mr. Beck looking into the future of maybe relocating to another spot on the airport, Mr. Nagin, the FBO person out there that has the lease for the city FBO hangar, indicates that there may be another business that might be interested in coming out there. If we restrict them to staying by CH3 or potentially CH4, which is not built, we will not be able to have a company come and build a hangar. It's just too prohibitive as far as cost. And so, if we look at other airports around the state, for example, Flying Cloud, which is one of the Metropolitan Airport Commission's airports, they are regulated probably ten times more than any place else in the state. You will see at Flying Cloud conglomerations of private business, private business on the same row of hangars. The Airport Commission does not feel that we have any reason not to have commercial leases in the private area. We, again, do not have a zoning one way or the other for that. And so, as the Airport Commission voted last meeting, we would like to say that the lease, whether you have a commercial lease out there or a private lease out there, that the tax structure, whether it be taxed as commercial use or private use, simply follow the lease. That makes the most sense for economic development in the future. That would satisfy Mr. Beck. Mr. Beck, I understand, has ninety-some percent of his business that comes from out of the area. Many aviation companies have most of their business from not in that town. They have it from some niche, like Bruce Jaeger had a niche out here. Mr. Beck has a niche where he's doing sealing fuel tanks for that particular kind of airplane. And ninety-some percent of his business, maybe ninety-nine percent, is not from this area. So we want to retain him. We don't want him to move away to another town, which they'll follow him to another town. So we'd like to keep that type of thing here. And we feel that the fire codes, et cetera, can be satisfied as far as the lease goes. The lease has to comply with the fire codes, et cetera, that are set up by the city.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Nedrowlo? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe not of Steve, but by approving their minutes, are we approving their motion? So that would be approved by the council?
Yes. Yeah, staff, that's how I would interpret it. You are concurring with that recommendation. Now, there are some staff questions, and the Airport Commission is aware of this. With the commercial hangars on the CH3 and the CH4, we are researching with the FAA. Again, if those change from a commercial to a private use, the city may have to repay funds to the FAA that were used to build that ramp. And so, we've asked that question of the FAA, and we're still waiting to get a formal answer from them. And that would be one concern of changing a commercial to a private use on the ramp.
But is that the question tonight? CH4 and 3? I thought 4 isn't built yet, 3 is there.
3 is there.
We're not questioning using that as a private or commercial, are we? Because that's going to remain commercial.
The city administrator brought up a good point. This is now a part of something else that's maybe muddied the water a little bit with respect to Mr. Jaeger selling his hangar to Mr. Dunick. Mr. Dunick has a hangar down in HG3 area, or HG4, I'm not sure, HG4. And he does not pay commercial, which he should not, because it's stored for his airplanes. Whereas, in the past, we've talked about commercial being somebody that advertises for business, somebody that runs a business business out of the airport itself. He does not do that, along with several other people that have corporate, in quotes, hangars. So the issue is, he is not taxed commercially where he is. The city administrator is saying that CH3 is in a commercial location, and there is a small portion of the ramp out in front of CH3 that was paid for with federal funds and state funds. Does that muddy the water on being CH3 taxed commercial or not commercial, because it's on a commercial ramp, so to speak?
Do you have a question?
Councilman Christensen, I think you've already approved the motion, but that doesn't make any difference, because we can't do anything, as the city administrator said, until we get approval from the state, FAA, if we can do that without changing the tax structure. The only thing that we're asking as a commission to go along with our recommendation to make it that way if the FAA will go along with us. So your approving that really hasn't made a difference, excepting you're backing us as a commission.
So it's contingent upon approval by FAA?
Yes.
Okay, I see.
It doesn't say that in here, so...
I guess it does not say that, but we've had, I mean, but staff has met with Mr. Curry and Mr. Nedrowlo, and I think the Airport Commission understands that and understands that, I mean, this is a recommendation, and if the recommendation is supported, and it is viable, and does not, you know, cause the city an issue with the FAA, then it's a recommendation we could implement.
Does that answer your question?
My question was just answered. I'm good, thank you.
Is there any safety concerns in regards to these changes?
I think that's a question for the fire marshal, if there's a concern about having a commercial and a private use in the same area.
There would not be a concern based on the location of the hangar from our side, but we'd want to look at the use and what the use actually is, and then how they're going about the process. And so, we have evaluated that in the current building that they're in, that was looked at. And if you remember, that building does have a fire suppression system stubbed into it. Now, the question would be, is if there's a fire protection system stubbed into the other building, which I'm sure there is not, we would have to evaluate as to whether or not that would be required or not. And that would take a court analysis to do that, and we'd be more than happy to take care of that. So I just want to stop down at the office, we can talk about that. I don't see a huge issue at this point, but we'd have to look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make the council aware that we have some really significant folks that serve on this Airport Commission. Jeff Newton from Genio Hormel serves on this, Sandy Gardner, John Lambing, Terry Elbers, and Dan Rigstedt. And it's a really hard-working commission, and I appreciate whatever support we can give them, because they're trying to do the best they can for us as a city at the airport.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens, do we need to take any action on this tonight?
I don't believe you need to take any action. I mean, you can adopt the minutes, and that is concurrence with their recommendation, just like your other minutes in other commissions and committees.
I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for hearing us.
Thank you very much. With that, do I hear a motion? I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to file the Airport Commission minutes of November 16th, 2011.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Airport Commission of November 16th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That carries. At this point, we'll move into the scheduled hearing. Mr. Okens, would you like to explain a little bit to us about what's going on?
You would need to open the hearing.
I'm sorry. We will open the hearing at this point. Mr. Okens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The meeting tonight is a scheduled truth and taxation hearing. This hearing is required by the state of Minnesota. It is required to gather public input, give them the opportunity to speak to the tax levy that may be proposed later in the meeting and/or the budget that the mayor is proposing. If I may, just take a short period of time and just review the budget and the tax levy. We have received additional information. The council, again, adopts a budget calendar. This process starts way back in April. The mayor gathers input through the city administrator's office from the various city departments, compiles that information, reviews it, and makes his presentation to the full city council or the finance committee, I guess. The charter requires him to do this by September. The finance committee, then, at that point, takes the mayor's proposed budget, reviews it, holds public hearings. We've had a couple of public work sessions this year, again, making it available to the general public to gather their input, and provides this information available on the city's website. That brings us to tonight's meeting, Mr. Mayor. And again, this will be a summary of both the mayor's budget presentation and the work session that the council held, as well as the finance committee held last Monday night. These were all taped and are available RAC-8, and we will have those. I don't know if all three of those or four of those are available on the city's website at this point, but there are, I know that your mayor's presentation, and I know the finance committee, I believe they're all out there and available for review. So we also have detailed information available in the city finance office for anybody who may have questions. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to briefly, again, go through the goals that the council has adopted. These goals were adopted at the council retreat back in April. There were five goals, leading from the leadership, the operations, efficient and effective services, infrastructure, again, efficient investments of transportation facilities and technology. Number four is the connections, strong public partnerships, by engaging the community in confidence in city government. And number five, development, thriving, dynamic regional center. Page three in your handout, and there are handouts for the general public that are here tonight in the back of the room. Again, it's a $31.7 million proposed budget. It's broken down into various categories that you see up on the screen. These categories are somewhat regulated by the state so that we could have comparative purposes with other communities as well. You'll see the general operating budget there at $12.4 million. Slide four is a five-year average. You'll notice that the 2012 budget that's being proposed, as far as the total overall budget, is considerably more than the five-year average. That is contributing to the $6 million that is being proposed to develop the old airport site. That proposed improvements are being funded totally by the local option sales tax. Two-thirds or three-quarters about are received and in the bank. The reason that that has been held up to this point is, of course, the land release that the city is working on and hope to have the beginning of 2012. The remaining is to be collected from the local option sales tax in 2012, and that will expire at the end of '12 as well. Page five is a summary of the revenues that are being proposed. These numbers have been amended by action from the last finance meeting. There was an amendment of about $24,000. That action, again, the full council will be asked to take that action later on in the meeting when you review your finance minutes. The two major revenues that you see on this page, again, are the current property taxes and the local government aid. There's been a lot of discussion, these two revenues. The local government aid is actually a reduction from 2011, but in 2011, the state did an allotment of over $400,000. We do have a slide later in the presentation that will speak to that to some degree. Page six is just a graphical presentation of those revenues. Page seven is a breakdown of $31.7 million in another classification area that the state likes to see so that they can do comparative purposes for other communities. Page eight, again, is a graphical presentation of those same numbers. Page nine and 10 are a breakdown of the capital expenditures. Page nine is $6.2 million of capital projects, and page 10 is $1.2 million of capital equipment that is scheduled to be replaced in 2012. Page 11 is a six-year history of the property tax that I mentioned earlier on in the presentation, as well as the local government aid allotment. You'll see in 2012, the local government aid allotment is scheduled to go down by $429,000. The mayor is proposing to increase the property tax levy by $196,000. The difference in those two revenues is, again, being proposed to be made up by a reduction in city staff by the elimination or non-filling of five city positions. The market value credit reduction, there's been a lot of talk about market value homestead credit, and now the excursion program. There were some questions at the last finance meeting about a 9% projection if the cities have been funded. We have received that information. I believe you've all been provided that. The city of Wilmer has received all of its market value homestead credit through 2009. The 9% that may have been referred to in previous meetings is the amount of homestead credit that the city received in what they were supposed to receive. So that's kind of where we've come up with the 9% that's been discussed in the past. 2010, we received 9% of what we were supposed to have received in 2010. 2011 has been reduced entirely, and those reductions in LGA and market value homestead credit in 2011 were made up by reductions in staffing and deferment of some capital improvements. Page 12 is a graphical presentation of the LGA amounts that we were supposed to receive. The amount that we received is in comparison to the levy, and you'll see that in 2012. Those are all somewhat equal. Page 13 is a comparison of the proposed 2012 property tax levy of $3.9 million, up $196,000 over 2011, and this amounts to a proposed 4% increase for the city portion of the property tax levy. Now, the citizens all would have received a property tax notification. That would include all three taxing jurisdictions, plus some special taxing jurisdictions, and this increase is only speaking toward the city portion. Candyway County, I believe, has held their hearing already, and Independent School District 347 is scheduled to hold theirs, I believe, next week or later on in the month. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if the public has any questions, I can see what I can do to answer those.
At this point, I would ask if the, this is a public hearing, and I would ask if the public has any questions, comments. If not, I will close the public hearing. Normally, we would turn this over to the council at this point, but this will be addressed at the finance committee report for November 28th. So we'll move right along to the, thank you, Steve, move right along to the Wilmer Open Forum. Is anyone scheduled to speak?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we'll move into the finance committee report for November 28th. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we're going to move right into the budget. This is a finance committee meeting from last Monday. The first item was consideration of the budget summary presentations from the various jurisdictions. We recognized Rice Hospital CEO Mike Schramm and CFO Bill Fenske, who appeared to review the 2012 budget, which was adopted by the Rice Memorial Hospital Board of Directors on November 9th, 2011. The 2012 budget was developed based on assumptions that were reviewed and approved by the hospital finance committee. Mr. Schramm reviewed the challenges the hospital faced in, that should be 2011, your minutes will say 2010, it's 2011, particularly a drop in inpatient volume, and noted that the subsequent changes made had resulted in a positive operating margin. Inpatient and outpatient volume has improved, and those numbers are much stronger than they were a year ago. Current staffing models should continue to work into 2012. Mr. Schramm stated the proposed 2012 budget is conservative and realistic. Mr. Fenske reviewed 2012 budget key indicators with us, noting the total estimated net operating revenue of $97,101,515, and expenses at $96,603,79, resulting in a net income of $1,071,136. The council asked some questions. We inquired about personnel wages and benefits and the cost of interpreters. Following a discussion of the budget and related hospital issues, we thanked Mr. Schramm and Mr. Fenske for the presentation and accepted the Rice Hospital report for information. Then we recognized Housing and Redevelopment Executive Director Joe Bengston. Ms. Bengston reviewed with the committee some of the highlights during the past fiscal year. The Wilmer County HRAs are wrapping up the 2009 Small Cities Development Program, which included rehabilitation in southeast Wilmer and Pennock, as well as commercial and rental housing in the Central Business District. Also discussed was the sharing of services between the county and the city HRA, and a study regarding a possible merger of the two bodies. Councilmember Christensen raised questions concerning the operating budget, including the city garage project, personnel services, and reserves. Mr. Christensen also commented on Westwind Townhomes and the number of calls for police services. Other comments from the council included the matter of the HRA being exempt from paying street assessments and monitoring the sale of the two remaining homes that were purchased by the HRA and rehabilitated. Ganesh noted a number of events promoting the downtown and commented on the small cities development grants for 11 projects in the downtown area with eight more planned. The HRA is requesting a 2012 levy of $170,000. This is the same amount that was levied in 2011, and that's to support its general administration budget and salaries, subsidized housing projects, and other housing projects, rental assistance programs, property improvement programs, and various federal and state programs, and the city's comprehensive Small Cities Development Program. Following that discussion, we thanked Ms. Bengston for the presentation and noted the committee would discuss the levy request and make a recommendation to the council. Then we recognized Wilmer Municipal Utilities General Manager Bruce Gom, who apologized for not having the 2012 budget prepared for the council consideration. The committee and council members expressed their disappointment in that the budget was not prepared and submitted for consideration. Mr. Gom stated that the budget would be submitted by year end. General Manager Gom reviewed with the committee the challenges they faced in 2010, including a, this says 50, it should be, we believe, 15%. a, this says 50, it should be, we believe, 15% increase in power supply costs. The council had approved a two-tier electric rate increase for 2011 and 2012. Those were two increases of 7% apiece. And they will be successful in turning around the financial deficits. The utilities is now stable with a positive rate of return. The Great River contract will expire in 2015, and staff is working on a renewal of that contract. Mr. Gom reviewed operation costs, capital project, vehicle purchases, and changes in staff. The 2012 budget is anticipated to be in the 10 and 1/2 to $11 million range, and the utilities plans to secure funds from a bonding process. We had some discussion. And during that, Councilmember Fagerly asked for an explanation of personnel changes, noting that he had received complaints from MOC employees. Mr. Gom explained that the utilities was going through a period of transition and is working to make things better. Councilmember Fagerly also inquired on the hours at the office by the general manager. And Mr. Gom stated that he has a variety of different functions and time in the office varies. Mayor Yanish asked the city administrator what the timeframe for the city was to complete the budget process. Ms. Stevens stated that all information must be submitted by December 12th in order to give a recommendation in place for the December 19th, 2011 council meeting. It was noted that the municipal utilities must submit their 2012 budget no later than December 9th, 2011. General Manager Gom said the budget will be done and submitted by that time. Councilmember Dokken also expressed disappointment for not receiving the budget and said the council needs to know what's going on at the utilities. Mr. Dokken asked that improvements be made in the utilities' agendas and suggested that action items be included. Following questions from the council regarding travel and expenses, the air permit with the UPS, wind generator, regulatory requirements, state mandates, and proposed upgrades, we reiterated to Mr. Gom that the utilities must be submitted by December 9th and received his report for information. The next item on our agenda, we called on the mayor. And Mayor Yanish provided a general overview of the city's 2012 budget. The mayor stated that it is his intention to help downsize city government and keep his commitment to transparency, and that he cannot do this alone. He will take the council with combined wisdom to make the right decisions. Will also take all city employees to understand that no one will be laid off. This will be accomplished through attrition as people retire or resign, and for all to understand that we must work harder and smarter in order to get the job done. The mayor concluded his comments stating, "With everyone's help, we can and we will streamline city government, and we will all be better for it." We then explained that the 2012 budget was a result, as we've heard earlier, of a couple council work sessions and several finance committee meetings. We noted that the budget was amended and increased by $23,200 from the mayor's initial proposal of $31,683,222. It was amended to reflect the cost of the fixed base operator agreement with Maximum Cruise Aviation. Funding for that agreement was inadvertently omitted from the original budget. City Administrator Stevens had recommended, and the committee approved, using increased revenues from the fire department service contracts with Dover and Wilmer townships to cover the costs of the fixed base operator agreement. These revenues will be at a higher rate than the city had initially budgeted for when they put the budget together in August. It's necessary to revise the 2012 budget by $23,200. Then City Administrator Stevens presented a history of intergovernmental transfers from Rice Hospital and the municipal utilities to the city of Wilmer. Finance Director Okins informed the committee that the municipal utilities' payments reflect a 4.2% retained earnings, and the Rice Hospital payments reflect adjustments due to the Rice Care Center project. Ms. Stevens reviewed vehicle use and fuel charges. It was noted that there were three pool vehicles with a combined average of 9,000 miles per year. Following discussion of the use, vehicle use and fuel charges, Councilmember Dokken requested that the information be provided in writing. Administrator Stevens will reevaluate vehicles usage, and the finance committee will review vehicle replacement policy in January 2012. There was discussion on the vehicles assigned to department directors and driven to work, but we stated that this was a labor contract issue for the Labor Relations Committee. Finance Director Okins reviewed the process in determining the 2012 budget, which was somewhat different than previous years due to the new mayor and city administrator. The budget calendar started in April and will be concluded on December 31st, 2012, with certification of the tax levy to the county. Truth and taxation hearing was held earlier. The 2012 proposed budget is $31,683,222. Mr. Okins reviewed the 2012 proposed budget, including the city's mission statement and goals, revenues, expenditures, and local government aid allotted and received. It was noted that the levy includes a 4% increase. Mayor Yanish reviewed the 2012 proposed levy, which reflects a 4%, $196,000 increase over 2011. Then we kind of began a review of the budget itself. The council requested additional clarification on the following expenditures. I should say, requested and received clarification. Funding increases for the fixed base operator and how these dollars are determined. Staff explained the formula, which takes into consideration total hours of operating costs. The FBO contract is negotiated and did not increase in 2011. Funding for new vehicles. If a vehicle is not purchased, where do these dollars go? Staff explained the budget is a working document, and the funds not used would be reallocated. SVHC, staff has, staff has been researching as the city has not, I'm going to start over. Staff has been researching as the city has not received all of the dollars, and we heard a little bit about that tonight. These dollars are not in the budget. Councilmember Johnson noted that 9% has been paid out statewide, and I think we heard from the finance director that we received 9% of our allotment in 2010. Capital outlay, when new vehicles are purchased, what happens to the used vehicles? Staff explained the vehicle replacement policy and noted that used vehicles often replace older ones in various departments. The older vehicles are traded or sold at the city auctions. Local government aid, additional cuts are expected. The MVHC, Market Value Homestead Credit, market exclusion, we've talked about. Tax levy comparison, we reviewed. Engineering. Funding for MS4 activity as mandated by the MPCA. Sign inventory agreement with SEH, Stormwater Review Agreement with BAR. Then we took a recess, and we came back and we got to work. There was, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to amend the 2012 budget by adding $23,200 for the fixed base operator contract with Maximum Cruise Aviation to provide certain airport services.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to amend the 2012 budget by adding $23,200 for the fixed base operator contract with Maximum Cruise Aviation to provide certain airport services. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
I'm sorry, Councilman Dokken.
Mr. Mayor, a question. In reading through the Airport Commission minutes, I'm not sure that it's that big of a deal, but on item number four, Airport Operations Supervisor Contract, it reflects their $20,000 rather than $23,200. How do we handle that?
I think it was the 23.
We can amend it by the 20,000. I think the $23,200 that we had proposed was based on the numbers prior to the negotiation with the, with the fixed base operator. If the actual contract is 20,000, then it would be 20,000.
So it's not a problem.
So I should change that to 20,000?
No, it should not be a problem. I mean, it can be, you know, the difference is 3,200 in the budget. You can amend it to 20, to add 20,000, or just simply as it was presented tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Hi.
Christiansen.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
Amen.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Dokken.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
DeBlick.
Hi.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Before I read this, I want to, I want to ask Councilmember Fagerly if this is saying that he had offered a motion to remove a carpool in the 2012 budget and that he would do that. I don't remember you doing that.
I said, "Leave it in."
That's what I thought. So, that, that did not happen. He said to leave it in the budget. So, then, following some discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to set the 2012 city property tax levy of $3,992,734 and approve the Wilmer Housing and Redevelopment Authority levy of $170,000.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to set the 2012 city property tax levy of $3,992,734 and to approve the Wilmer Housing and Redevelopment Authority levy of $170,000. Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
Amen.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Dokken.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
DeBlick.
Hi.
Reese.
Hi.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Then we talked a little bit about the FBO contract. You know, do we, before I make this, do we want to leave these numbers as they're written here?
You know, I think that is appropriate to leave them as they are written there. That was what was presented this evening. Again, if you wish to, you know, reduce it by, as Mr. Dokken pointed out, $3,200, we could do that, too.
We'll do that at some point.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Then, following that, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution, the 2012 budget, that the 2012 budget be adopted as amended in the amount of $31,706,422.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to amend the 2012 budget in the amount of $31,706,422. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Amen.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Dokken.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
DeBlick.
Hi.
Reese.
Hi.
Christiansen.
Hi.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Then we had a few miscellaneous items. Finance Director Okins informed the committee that the fire department is requesting permission to accept a donation from Wilmer Faith at Work for $908.37 to be applied for the purchase of a trailer from Dahlberg Trailer Sales. And I would introduce a resolution to accept a donation from Wilmer Faith at Work for $908.37 to be applied towards the purchase of a trailer from Dahlberg Trailer Sales, and that the city administrator prepare a letter of appreciation.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept a donation from Wilmer Faith at Work for $908.37 to be applied towards the purchase of a trailer from Dahlberg Trailer Sales, and that the city administrator prepare a letter of appreciation. Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Dokken.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
DeBlick.
Hi.
Reese.
Hi.
Christiansen.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Then Finance Director Okins informed us that the fire department is requesting permission to accept a donation to be put towards the repair of a fire department gas monitor. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to accept a donation from Sonya Westry for $100 to be put toward the repair of a fire department gas monitor, and that the city administrator prepare a letter of appreciation.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept a donation from Sonya Westry for $100 to be put towards the repair of a fire department gas monitor, and that the city administrator prepare a letter of appreciation. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Hi.
Dokken.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
DeBlick.
Hi.
Reese.
Hi.
Christiansen.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
Amen.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Dokken.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
DeBlick.
Hi.
Reese.
Hi.
Christiansen.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
Amen.
Hi.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
That concluded the work of the committee. Unless there's questions, I would move to file the minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee Report for November 28th, 2011. Is there a discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll move into the Community Development Committee Report for December 1st, 2011. Councilman Dokken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The meeting was conducted on December 1st. All of the committee members were there. City Administrator Charlene Stevens was in place of Bruce Peterson. Mary Yanish and Councilmember Tim Johnson were also present. Item number one was for public comments, and there were no public comments. Item number two is the FAA land release at the old airport. City Administrator Stevens stated that a letter would be sent to the FAA on December 2nd, 2011 detailing the city's efforts to comply with the first set of milestones in the memorandum of agreement. Councilmember Christiansen asked when a response would be received from the FAA. City Administrator Stevens responded that she would be following up with the FAA in two weeks after sending the letter. Councilmember Christiansen asked if it was likely that the first land release would be secured prior to the end of 2011. City Administrator Stevens stated that the FAA response would need to be very timely for that to occur. However, she was hopeful that January would be a reasonable date. Item number three, downtown planning. City Administrator Stevens reviewed meeting schedule for the upcoming downtown planning meetings, beginning with the public meeting on December 6th, 2011, at 7:00 PM. Mrs. Stevens noted that the location had changed from Christiansen and Associates to Luther Hall at Bethel Church in order to accommodate more people. Ms. Stevens stated that council members were welcome to attend the meetings. Mary Yanish encouraged members to attend the public meeting, circulate, and observe the discussions. Item number four dealt with John's Supper Club, and it's an update for information only. City Administrator Stevens provided the members with a memorandum from building official Randy Cardell detailing the progress since the last inspection of the property. Administrator Stevens stated that staff felt it was unlikely that the timeframe of December 31st, 2011 for completion would be met. Councilmember Anderson requested that the city council members be given an opportunity to tour the property prior to the December 31st. Councilmember Amen noted that the property owner was seeking some additional carpenters to complete work. Chair Dokken suggested that if extensions to the timeframe were to be granted, they should be in smaller increments with defined objectives. Item number five was miscellaneous. Councilmember Johnson raised a concern regarding trash on the sidewalk of Benson Avenue between Fourth and Fifth Street. Councilmember Dokken expressed similar concerns. City Administrator Stevens stated that the building official would address the matter and issue a citation if necessary. And unless there are other things to come before this committee, I would move to file
We'll announce the council meeting dates for next week. Councilman Anderson.
Finance Committee will meet Monday, the 12th, at 4:45.
Councilman Amen.
Wednesday, the 14th, wasn't Charlie?
Correct.
45, Labor Relations.
On Tuesday, or Wednesday.
14th, that's Thursday.
Thursday.
It's Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Councilman Reese.
Public Works, Public Safety, Tuesday, the 13th.
And Councilman Dokken.
The 15th, 4:45, Community Development.
Thank you. Any miscellaneous? Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question. Back on the budget, Mr. Okens noted that 2012 is the last year that we receive lost local option sales tax funds. Is there a date that we have to be concerned with as far as filing to sunset that? Is it like six months ahead of time, four months, or do we have to do it a year?
Three months before, so September 30th.
Okay, so we have time to do it, then. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Community Ed and Rec meets next Friday?
This Friday.
This Friday. The 9th.
Friday, the 9th.
At the --
At Jefferson School.
Okay. Any other? Councilman Dokken.
Community Activity Center meets tomorrow at 11:00 AM, out of the Wilmer Community and Activity Center.
Is there a COP meeting tomorrow night, too, that I'm thinking about?
Yes.
There is. There's one at the Fire Department at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to also remind people of the downtown planning meetings that are being held this week as well. The public meeting is tomorrow evening, December 6th, at 7:00 PM at Luther Hall in Bethel Church. And then we will also be holding meetings on December 7th and 8th for the Stakeholders Group. We'll be holding a meeting at 4:00 PM on December 7th at the African Development Center for East African community and businesses. And then at 6:00 PM on that same evening, December 7th, at the Wilmer Area Multicultural Market, a stakeholders meeting for the Latino businesses. And then Thursday, December 8th, we will have two additional meetings for stakeholders, government, nonprofit, and other entities at 4:00 PM. And then downtown businesses, again, at 6:00 PM. And on December 8th, those two meetings will be held at Christensen and Associates. Again, council members are welcome to attend all of those, and we certainly would welcome the public tomorrow evening at Luther Hall at 7:00 PM.
Thank you very much. I encourage the council members to attend if at all possible, as many meetings as possible. Any further miscellaneous? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion has been made and seconded. We are adjourned.